Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The May the 15th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the city of Longview is now called to order. We welcome everyone that's here and appreciate you taking the time to come. At this time, I would like to officially welcome two new members to the commission. Brian Dahlberg, if you'll raise your hand. I had the privilege of serving on the local school board with his wife for a number of years, Dr. Dahlberg, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And then we have Marlena Cooper. And she says that she is originally from Jefferson, but has lived here in Longview for a number of years, so welcome aboard also. We appreciate both of you. And usually, we get out of here at least by midnight.
Right.[168.73][168.73](Laughter).
Last meeting, we had a five-minute meeting, so you won't see that very often, unfortunately. At this time, I'm going to ask Chad Harkley to give us the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Norah, thank you for this day, and just thank you, Father, for your many, many blessings. And we just pray for each case today, Father, that we use your wisdom in order to make decisions on behalf of the city today. And just thank you for the privilege to serve. In your name, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's that mean? Sorry about that. The next item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting in April. Has everyone had the opportunity to look over them? Anyone have any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve. Have a second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Minutes are approved unanimously. The next item is citizen comment. This is not part of the regular agenda. Actually, the citizen comment portion is that anybody who has any comments that they'd like to make prior to the actual zoning meeting, then we give you the opportunity to do so. So if there's someone in the audience that would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, please come forward and state your name. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Cliff Hale. I'm a resident of 223 Longleaf. And...
Mr. Hale, I think you're going to speak on an item that's later on in the agenda.
You're only an agenda item, I believe.
Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, this is public comment. I'm sorry. Okay, so I see no one on public comment, so we'll go to the regular agenda. Tonight, there's five items on the regular agenda. The purpose of the meeting is to hear all the pertinent testimony of those in support of and those in opposition of applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two different meetings required to approve a change in zoning. The procedure, I will open a public hearing, and after the public hearing is opened, Angela explains, the staff explains exactly what it's about. Then we will have the applicant, if they would like to come forward and explain their position on it. And then after that, I'll open the public hearing, and we'll have the general public, those in support of and those in opposition. If you're part of a large group, I don't see a real large group tonight, but we do ask that you appoint a spokesperson, so we do not hear the same testimony over and over. When addressing the commission, please state your name and your address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes, and please speak into the microphone, so we can hear what you're saying. When all the sides have spoken, then the public hearing on the matter will be closed. No further public discussion will be allowed after that point, and I'll entertain motions to either approve or deny. And then, anything will then go to the June the 8th City Council meeting for them to look at it, anything that we do approve. All right, regular agenda, item A. Angela, you're up.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We held to consider application S-23-04 filed by Frederick Jenkins requesting a specific use permit to allow for one-family dwelling in multi-family three zoning district for approximately .337 acres of lots 1A, 2A, 3A, 1B, 2B, and 3B, Block 10, Ray Edition, located on the south side of Griffin Street, east of Edna Lane. As the caption stated, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a one-family, also known as a single-family dwelling in multi-family zoning district. An SUP is required to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. There are several single-family or one-family dwellings in this neighborhood already, as well as a couple of two-family dwellings scattered throughout this neighborhood. The applicant would like to bring this property into compliance with current zoning districts before developing the property. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Angela at this point?
If this is approved, what is, what would be the minimum square footage they could build there?
For a home?
Yeah, for a single-family, since it's zoned multi-family.
So he could build the minimum, he could build, let me try to do it a little more correctly, would be 1,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Any other questions of Angela?
Angela, is it one single-family home, or the way it's drawn up looks like six individual properties?
Yeah, I believe these lots were somehow further subdivided, and so I believe the gentleman is only wanting to build one on all of these lots. Yeah.
Any other questions of the staff? Is the applicant present?
Present.
Would you like to come forward, please? See if we have any questions of you.
Okay, my name is Frederick Jenkins. I own 1004, 1006 Griffin. I live at 203 Rebecca Circle. Trying to put a single-family home there in a multi-family zoning deal. Been on the property for about 13 years now, so I'm trying to do something with it for my wife, kids, and family, so.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
At this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of the request in the audience? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition that's in the audience? Commissioners, you have any additional comments or questions? At this time, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. We have several motions to approve, and seconds. Did you get all that, Angela?
We did get that.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passed by unanimous consent. Angela?
Thank you.
Regular agenda, item B.
Item B, a public hearing will be held to consider application PD-23-03 filed by Hardisons Marketplace requesting a rezone for approximately 2.23 acres of lots 1A, 1B, Block 1, Thomas Manor, Unit 5, from heavy commercial to planned development for retail, office, and duplex cottage development located on the northwest corner of Gilmer Road and Nicky Drive. As stated, the applicant is requesting a rezone to allow for planned development. Currently, Hardisons is already located at this site, but they're, what they're wanting to do is a cottage-style development for the women that are in their program, and they're proposing to build that behind their existing retail store. The project will have a 25-foot setback from the property line adjacent to Nicky Drive with a minimum 10-foot rear setback. All structures will comply with the building code requirements, and through the development process, the site will meet all codes set forth in the Unified Development Code. Gilmer Road is classified as our principal arterial roadway and is maintained by tech stop. And this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the comprehensive plan and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioners, you have any questions of Angela at this point?
Is there going to be a private driveway for them to enter, or how do they plan to enter their new development?
It's going to be a private drive.
Off of Gilmer Road or off of...
No, they're not going to have any more additional drives off of Gilmer Road, since that's a tech stop roadway. They'll get a private drive off of Nicky.
The applicant is present. Julie, if you'd come to the microphone, state your name, please, and address.
My name is Julie Rachels, and the address, do you want to give my address, or you want me to give Hardisons? Hardisons is 3501 Gilmer Road. My personal is 1003 Chateau Court here in Longview, and I'm the CEO and founder of Hardisons. This property, what we want to do, we purchased this property two and a half years ago with this in our master plan, to build housing behind our back building, to provide that one-to-two-years transitional housing for women graduating out of our program. And so this is just the next phase of what we're wanting to achieve here.
Okay, any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Are you proposing attached duplexes? What type of housing are you proposing?
They're going to look like cottages, but they're going to be duplexes, and we'll have four duplexes, will be five duplexes, but four of them, two of them are three-bedroom, one-bath, attached to a two-bedroom, one-bath, and then there'll be two duplexes that are two-bedroom, one-bath, both sides. And then we'll have a one-bedroom, one-bath cottage for our resident assistant attached to a laundry cottage. And so it'll all be on the back part of our property with access to the parking lot.
Will you be able to maintain any of that landscape on the backside? Any of those trees or anything? Are you planning to...
We will. We'll also, we want to keep some of the good trees, but we'll have, we go all the way down to the creek, and so if you'll look, there's a lot that goes down. We're going to try to keep with that terrain. For the playground, we're going to have a community garden and also community areas that they can just be, it's just going to be a community. What we're looking for is safe, affordable housing for the women coming out of our program, because they're starting over. And so it usually takes about a year to two years, once they've gone into a career and a lot of them go to college. And so they need that first couple of years, just to really get on their feet. So that's what we're looking for, for this property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any other questions? Ms. Rachel, where she sits down? Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We may call you back up if we need you. I will now open the public hearing. First of all, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in support of this? I see none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak against it and opposition of it? If so, please come to the podium. I see none. Commissioners, any additional questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, for approval?
For approval.
For approval and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone in opposition? I usually don't do this, Rachel, but we do appreciate the work that your nonprofit is doing in the city of Longview and taking care of some really difficult situation with ladies, so we appreciate the work that you've done here very much. Angela, item C.
Yes, sir. Item C, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-11 filed by Sensato LLC requesting a rezone from single-family 4 to general retail zoning district for approximately 9.602 acres of a portion of abstract 262. A Jordan survey tracks 1819, 19-01, Section 5, located on the east side of Southeastman Road, north of Cotton Street. The applicant is requesting a rezone from single-family 4 to general retail for the portion shown here in the blue on this map. The applicant would like to rezone the property for future retail development. Eastman Road is a tech stop roadway and is classified as a principal arterial roadway. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions at this point? Commissioners for the staff. Is the applicant in the audience? If you'd like to come forward, please.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Mike Beavers. I live at 5101 FM 439 in Belton, Texas. Thank you for having me here tonight. We, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the staff. We've developed many projects in east Texas and a handful here in Longview over the years, and they've been very helpful, and I appreciate the guidance and the work that they've helped us with this. The specific corner, we built the SEFCO there, where the Development Arm for Fikes Wholesale based out of Temple. We developed that SEFCO there a number of years ago, or a few years ago, and this is bringing to you guys for consideration the balance of the property that we own around this site. We originally discussed with staff about what we think would be appropriate for this. It's currently zoned single-family 4, and we brought the zoning case for the SEFCO a few years ago, it's general retail. And I think that if you were to pull up a planning book and say, how do we transition from a major arterial through to parks and ultimately, single-family, we would use transitional zoning of retail or office and then into some other sort of low-density impact before we get to the residential zoning. So we propose this. It's part of item D, which is coming up next, which is the property which would transition towards the back of the property. And happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, as I understand, this portion of the land, I mean, item D is also dealing with you, but this has to do only with general retail, correct?
Yes, sir. Which is what the SEFCO is zoned and why we brought the consistent zoning with that. Yes, sir.
Commissioners, you have any questions at this point?
Do you have an idea of what partners you're planning to bring in for general retail?
Well, I don't have any specific people that we're working with. We typically work with a lot of fast-food operators, Starbucks, McDonald's, those kinds of things, and I think if the market will have it, I think those are probably uses that we'll put this in front of them for that type of use.
So what square footage are you looking at, just overall? Are you planning on, will it be a couple of different doors, or are we looking at one...
It'll be several doors, yes, ma'am.
Do you have an idea of how many doors you're proposing?
No, I think that, I think that the most conventional wisdom is probably going to be two lots that face on the main road, and then as it transitions to the back, we've kind of left that a little bit defined, because we just don't know what the market's going to bring us. And then we'll bring those forward, you know, and further subdivide those lots specifically when uses become apparent.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I've got one other question. So is there, so on your development, is there a five, 10-year plan on the development scale? When are you thinking about, if this was approved, when would you potentially be thinking about breaking ground?
Well, we have to get users first and get that part, but we'd immediately take it to market to work with the partners that we work with, you know, all over the state. We do all the development for this group in the state of Texas, so we've got lots of relationships, but we don't even know to put this in front of them until we get the community's support for this type of use. So it's kind of a little bit unusual for a developer to actually put the horse ahead of the cart, and that's what we're doing here, is to come in and see what uses the community would approve, and then go find the best partners that we can find for those uses.
Absolutely. Have you reached out to any other, have you done any community research outside of putting in the proposal?
Not specifically in advance. We worked with Angela and their team. This was originally on the zone, zoning agenda for, I want to say, it was either February or March. It's been, it's been out there a while, and when this went through, originally, and I think it was item D that actually generated some interest or further explanation, we've reached, we've had conversations with a couple of folks that have reached out to us, and we've immediately returned their calls and worked with them, but it was on item D. Nobody's had any comments with us regards to item C that I'm aware of.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, sir, subject to recall if we need you back up here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this request? Please come forward, state your name and your address.
Sidney Allen, 103 Quiet Shadows, Longview. I just really have a question. Maybe I'm off a little, where is the railroad track in relation to this? Is it on the north end or where is it?
It is, Sidney, let me see, fucking, it's right on the north end. Do you see that parking lot? Do you see where the arrow is?
Oh, okay.
That's, yes, it's right there.
So they're not right next to the rail, they're down a little ways from the railroad track then?
Yeah, just south of Rock.
Item, item D will be right next to the railroad tracks.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Approximately, how much frontage do they have on Eastman Road? Do we know?
I don't know quite sure. Maybe the applicant would know how much frontage this zoning request has.
I'd like to remember, we probably looked it up through our Longview report, but it's, I guess it's called 1000D.
Okay, is it about the same as what SEFCO, well, you've got more than what SEFCO has there on the corner.
Angela, would you mind putting up the two-color plat, because all of what's outlined there, I don't believe is item C. There you go. So it's about one and a half times from the width of, can you guys hear me at all? About one and a half times the width of SEFCO. Now, I think the guys over there looking it up, that's, that's not a number that I had converted to memory. And then we don't go all the way to the railroad tracks. There's one property only, I think Encore's down there.
The, the property line that's, that's not on Eastman Road, I mean, that curvy property line, is that the way it's surveyed, or did you just pick that property line out, or that curvy line?
Well, it's a function of the next zoning case and how we laid those out, where the streets may go, and it's kind of a function of that.
All right.
And the topography. It's a, there's a few gophers that were digging around there about a couple hundred thousand years ago, and it's pretty, pretty...
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Anyone else that would like to speak in support or ask a question? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward. State your name, your address, please.
My name is Cliff Hale, and I'm at 223 Longleaf, Longview. And this is pertaining to, I'm just going to take the opportunity to discuss C and D, if that's appropriate, if that's okay. I have a petition here signed and representative of the neighbors in the surrounding area, and we, the citizens of the surrounding area, the proposed rezoning petition, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council reject zoning cases Z-23-11 and Z-23-12. We view the proposed zoning changes and any other changes to existing zoning as a negative impact to our neighborhoods, residences, and we ask that you please support your local citizens and voters in this request to deny. We ask that you protect the single largest investment that we, as homeowners, have, and that's our homes. And we view this as negative and feel like we would like to see the city stick with the original zoning as planned and the comprehensive plan that was developed by the city and published in 2015, that released that and had the proposed use as SF4, single-family residence. And I do have signatures from residents of Longleaf, Country Club Drive, Pinecrest Drive, and I'd like to further state that I collected these signatures in one afternoon, and of the doors I had knocked on, and the people were able to answer. I only had one that didn't want to sign, and the others were overwhelmingly supporting this petition to deny this request. And I can provide a copy to Angela as well. Furthermore, I guess, and I don't want to speak out of turn for Mr. Beavers, but from what I saw on this proposed development, I did see over 110 lots, which represent 220 doors. I feel like traffic is an ultimate concern. There's already a traffic congestion problem in conjunction with the school right up the road, in conjunction with the new SEFCO. And then also, the other proposed plan I saw was a high-density storage units. So I don't know if those plans have changed, if it's changed to restaurants or what have you. But the plan I saw had storage units and then these over 110 lots of multi-family units. So Angela, I'll provide you a copy.
Yeah, we do need a copy. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Brenda Vothier. I live on Country Club Drive.
Pull the mic down, please. There you go.
My name is Brenda Vothier. I live on Country Club Drive. I recently retired and moved here to Longview, which is supposed to be the retirement city, where to go, where to be. This is not in my plan. This is almost in my backyard. I am vehemently against this. Don't need the, I know I'll hear the noise. I won't be able to see it, but again, the trees are going to be gone, so I might be able to see it. Longview is advertised as the retirement city to live in. I'm here, and I don't think that land that is zoned residential should be rezoned to commercial, because somebody wants it that way. I think the community has a right to speak and a right to be heard by the citizens that run the city. I'm very much against this. I do not want it. I don't want the noise, the traffic. We don't know what's going to be built there in the retail part. We don't know what's going to be built, and again, combining the two, we don't know what's going to be built in the multi-family units. Nobody knows. I think that there's a, I don't know if it's procedure or if it's a lack of transparency. How can you vote for something that you don't know what's going in? Is it Section 8 housing? Is it extremely high-income apartments? Is the retail going to be fast food, or is it going to be a dollar store? I not go down the road further on Eastman. I don't think this area that's full of trees and wildlife, and basically in my backyard, I don't think this area that's full of trees and wildlife and basically in my backyard should be approved. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners. Well, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak against it? Yes, sir?
I, I may be, I may be out of order, but would you put back up actually what we're talking about on this particular item here? Put that back on the map?
We're, we're talking only about the part that has to do with the general retail.
Yes, I think we're.
Yeah, I know there's been.
Let's, let's understand that you're talking only about the part that has to do with general retail on Eastman Road. And economic development is your growth factor in any city. And if you refuse to, I mean, Eastman Road, I mean, the Sepco station down there is excellent. Now you have to understand, you're talking about economic development along Eastman Road. That's what this proposal is about. So let's don't get it confused with another item on the agenda that's, that is completely different. I mean, you've got to understand, you're voting on two separate items and we've had some discussion here on putting those together. And that's not what you're doing. You're, you're voting on this item, this retail development on Eastman Road.
Yeah, you did a better job. I was about to explain that, Mr. Allen, that it is, there, there's two different items here. Two completely different items. The only item that we're discussing here has to do with the general retail portion of it, the changing of the zoning for it. The next one is the one that has to do with housing. So we've got to keep that. Commissioners, do you understand?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in opposition? Commissioners, you have any additional questions or comments at this point?
Angela, what are some common examples of general retail uses?
So I mean, your typical retail. So it could be a restaurant. Now, if it's general retail, if it's fast food and they have a drive-through window, they'll need to come back for a specific use permit for a drive-through window. But sit-in dining, restaurants, offices, doctors' offices, those type uses. Now, I know Mr. Hale talked about self-storage mini warehouse. That's not allowed by right in general retail, so they'd have to come back for a specific use permit to be allowed to do that use in general retail zoning district. But yeah, doctors' offices, offices, retail type uses. I'm missing banks. Yeah, service, yeah. You're welcome.
Is this, is this piece of property here, the one we're talking about right now, all going to come on Eastman Road? Or is it going to, is there going to be a driveway just east of that convenience store?
I believe this is, and this is just an exhibit, so please be aware that things could change. But based on their exhibit, it looks like there's going to be a road.
Okay, is that showing the housing that's certain part?
Yeah.
Angela, is it common to have something rezoned before there's firm plans in place?
Yes, that's actually very common. Most people don't want to, like Mr. Beavers had stated. Most people aren't going to market a piece of property without getting the zoning in place first.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we have any type of feasibility study or anything about the traffic and how that the entry is going to affect? I know they kind of have a backup with that light right there at Eastman Road going into the Sepco. Is there any, has there been any type of traffic study done?
Well, so zoning is the first step. We usually don't, when we get into site planning, plating, that's when our engineers will look at this development and decide whether or not a traffic study is going to be required.
And I only have that question only because we said we were going to be coming off of Eastman Road. You know, for whatever general retail, there will be a concern.
And of course, they'll have to comply with text dot standards as far as driveway spacing, the number of driveways and things like that. And so most likely, they're not going to get a lot of driveways off of Eastman Road. But that's when our engineers will take a look at it and determine that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
One.
Yes, sir?
How, what is the distance between, go bring up a clearer slide? The distance between that and the housing on Club Drive or whatever, the part that's boxed there? What is the distance between those corners? Anybody got an idea?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that distance would be.
I mean, is it 20 feet or is it 100 feet? What is, I mean, got to be some idea. Heck, I'm, I'm going to ask you. I'll guess at anything.
Oh, sorry. Let me get to it.
This is the part we're talking about now, correct?
Yes, sir.
How far is it from here to these properties?
It's going to be in the neighborhood of 150, 160 feet. And the way that I get that is.
Lot depth and then the road.
And the width of the road. So the width of the road, I believe, is probably around 50 or 60 foot.
Yeah.
And, and then the lot depth is going to be in that 110 or so. So it's about 150 foot.
And then how many, do you remember Angela, how many single family homes are, are just to the north of that, those duplexes? Like on hole nine and hole three or no, like hole nine, like.
I think there's, let me look at the area. I believe there's one or two. Yeah. I think there may be one or two homes.
I didn't know where that, where, I forgot your name, man. Where, where are you, where are you talking about that you live in relation?
It's on the other side of the golf course.
Yeah, it's.
On the other side, on the east side of the golf course?
Yes.
It's actually, yeah, just across the street.
Okay, the modern, the modern places?
Across the road here.
No, a little further. Yeah, right. Do you see where that arrow is? Yeah.
I see. Yeah, I know.
Near golf.
Okay. I don't, okay.
That's always a neighborhood on the left you've gone up.
That's a pretty wide area. I don't think you're going to hear a lot.
Mr. Kamak, if you would like to answer that question, feel free to step up.
Yeah, I'm Casey Kamak. I live at 124 North Club Drive. There are two houses on North Club. Mine is at the end. There's a circle. And then there's one closer to Cotton Street.
Mr. Kamak, do you live closer to the golf course?
Yeah, I'm right on the golf course.
You're on the west side of the golf course, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But I have property that goes up to this development.
Okay.
And in the back of me too, so. And I, I guess my question, I'm not a real estate person, but there's a right of way. There's a pipeline that runs behind my house and there's a right of way there. There's a creek. And, and of course, that's in a flood plain. So the whole golf course is, is a flood plain. And my house is not in the flood plain, but all that's a flood plain. Whether you can build on that, I don't know. But anyway, this, the gas station, I mean, the new retail, that's pretty a lot closer than I, than I thought. And my neighbor here, he lives in a townhouse there and then we have some very nice duplexes. I'm talking about $300,000 duplexes on the street. So it's a great neighborhood. We need to be protected. We've already had a lot of noise from, from the gas station, so we need some sort of, keep some trees or barrier or something there. That, that would be my comment, my request.
Have you guys thought about what, kind of like the provisions that the Country Club did? Of maybe in addition to the already required setbacks and plus the flood plain? It looks like it's going to be a significant distance. And then if they were willing to, which are probably going to have to anyway, if you look at neighborhoods up against, that are up against retail, you've always got some sort of fencing there.
Yes, so for retail, you would need to buffer between retail and residential. But when it's duplex adjacent to single family, you're not required to buffer.
But this is.
This is retail.
Retail.
Yeah, they're going to have 160 feet between them. It's going to be single family residential or duplex. And them. So it'll be residential. It'll be, if you go back to the street layout.
Yeah, I mean.
Go back to the street layout.
Oh, I see.
I was, I was thinking we were just talking about the first part, the smaller piece.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, the general retail portion.
Okay, so, I mean, my personal opinion anyways, I, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with that being general retail, you know, on its own. The other part is a different animal that we'll talk about in a moment.
That's what we're going to talk about.
But I, I was making sure we were all on St. Peger. I was on St. Peger, whatever, because that, that's why I was asking about the fencing.
Yeah, the general retail is not going all the way to this neighborhood.
Right.
Does Mr. Kamak need to fill out a card before he leaves?
It would be preferable if you could.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions or comments? At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Is that one one way or the other, guys?
I would, I would vote for it. I'm for it.
You have a motion to approve?
For that portion, yeah.
For the, that's all we're talking about.
Second.
We have a second, motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All in opposition? Did you get it? Okay, thank you. So that one does pass with a one opposition. Regular agenda, item D. So now we're to the portion that deals with the residents.
Yes, sir. So public hearing will hold to consider application Z 23-12 filed by Sensato LLC requesting a rezone from single family four to two-family TF zoning district for approximately 40.886 acres of abstract 262, a Jordan survey tracks 16, 17, and a portion of 18, 19, and 19-01. Section 5 located on the east side of Southeastman Road, north of Cotton Street. So the applicant would like to rezone this property from single family four to two-family zoning district. The applicant has been talking to some of the adjacent neighbors. And the applicant is showing on this exhibit a 20-foot natural buffer zone and a six-foot solid wood fence between this development and the adjacent golf course. Eastman Road is a texted roadway and classified as a principal arterial roadway. This development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. If Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to approve this item, staff would like to suggest that they make a recommendation with the stipulations provided in the staff report. Also, Pinecrest Country Club did submit today a letter in support of this item. You do have the letter in front of you. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
You're referring to the letter that came from Pinecrest Country Club, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Angela, there are two exits from the bottom left or is that just one?
I believe I only see one.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the other one may be, it looks like maybe it's an easement.
Okay. There's one on Cotton Street, correct? Behind Sepco?
Yeah. Yeah, so they are proposing one off of Cotton and then one off of Eastman. But like I said, this is an exhibit. And so, you know, through the development process, our engineers will have to look at access management because this is a texted road. And as Ms. Cooper stated, there is a lot of traffic on this roadway.
Is there any portion of this that's in a flood zone?
Yes, there is some. If you look back, let me look at the future land use map. So there is some flood plain property and they will have to, you know, develop around that.
And that's noted in what color there?
I'm sorry, it's in the gray. And it's called FP. And it, yeah, it's very approximate.
That's not an official flood plain map, but it's just an approximation. Go back to that. One, you can see where they're kind of leaving a reserve between Mr. Kamak's property. And that's, I believe, because of the flood, floodway.
Any other questions of the staff? Will the applicant, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Are there any height restrictions or anything like that in regard, on that property?
Two-family zoning district is restricted to two and a half stories, which is pretty typical, or it is very typical of any residential zoning district.
Any other questions of staff? Will the applicant come back up, please?
Yes, sir. For the record, my name is Mike Beavers. I live at 5101 FM 439 in Belton, Texas. And I'm going to be able to answer quite a few questions for folks. There is, we're only proposing one texted entrance on Eastman Road. And that would be a boulevard style entrance with, that would serve the residential component as well as the commercial component. There's cross-access built into the original Sepco plat that would then parallel Eastman Road. As it, it's a texted controlled road. We pretty much know the answer to that. The other little, what you think may be, or what appears to possibly be a driveway right there, that's actually a, a gas pipeline, a high-pressure gas pipeline that runs through there. And so it's held out from under everything. And so that, no access would be there. For Mr. Kamak's property, that's that kind of a upside-down hockey stick looking piece up there. That's just that large block. That's all floodway and area that, that's not buildable. And we would just keep it as a green zone because it's, you don't do anything else with those. You just leave them, leave them timbered. We have, like I say, when we originally brought this forward, the test fit that you see here is we, we went to our engineering group and said, okay, guys, what, after speaking with staff, what's a possible use here? We've done this in Salado, Texas. We did, built, had a surplus property around a big project like this. And we did the very same exact buildings we're looking at. And so they are all two-bedroom, two-bath with a single-car garage duplexes. It would be built and operated as a single owner, just like a giant apartment complex. But we would, the city street, the, the roads that go in here would actually be city streets. And the, as we looked at this and we talked with staff and we talked internally, it was right now, the property's zoned SF4, which you can come in and do this SF4 today by right. Obviously, got to go through all the technical requirements, traffic studies, access, water sewer and all the things. And it'll allow you to build a 1,200 square foot home on a 7,500 square foot lot. Not, not restricting to bedrooms or, or anything, but it'll be a three-bedroom house probably. And so this, and SF4 allows for some other uses and you guys are probably more familiar with those than I am. But when we looked at this, we felt that this would be a betterment from our perspective. It would be a better tool to use from a planning perspective to transition between a large arterial through some general retail or neighborhood services type uses before it gets to the golf course and single family homes. There's a lot of tools you could use, but low-density multifamily is probably one that you would pick out if you had your choice. So we designed it with that in mind. And around the cul-de-sac that's in the center, that's actually the buildings themselves. So they're all placed in here saying, okay, would that fit and what the lots would be? If you did this SF4, you're, I haven't done one for SF4, but I suspect that you would get in the neighborhood of 150 lots, give or take. At three bedrooms, that's X number of people. I think the impact to the property as far as if this is developed to its highest and best use, is probably going to be about the same number of people unless you go vertical. And we, of course, we're not planning on doing, going vertical, although the UDC would allow us to. This is exactly what we're planning and what we intend to do. So happy to answer any questions. I know there's a lot of concern. We've been working with a gentleman, I'm guessing you guys probably know, his name is Drew Jackson. I've never met him. I've talked to him on the phone a handful of times, that voiced concern when this was originally on the agenda a few months ago. And we've worked with him to come up with a, a buffer, leaving 30-foot of, 20-foot, excuse me, of natural trees. And then we would build a, basically a privacy fence and put it on our property. and then we would build a, basically a privacy fence and put it on our property line, so we would set in twenty-foot of a natural barrier. Mostly, the concern was for the patrons of the golf course, and that's the only ones that have expressed any interest, except for Mr. Hale. Did I get your last name right? Yeah, that called me today, and we had a fifteen- or twenty-minute conversation, and he brought up some points that he's concerned about. And I think his preference is to build single-family homes on there, but I'll let, I'm sure he'll speak on his own. But that's the only two folks that we've had inquire. And so we didn't bring it back before you until we felt like we had a consensus. We didn't wanna, I didn't want a bunch of angry neighbors to show up and be fussing at us, and we've answered every call or any request that's given to us. So.
So are you gonna clearcut the whole property?
Well, I think, I think if you're gonna do a residential project that's not multi-story, multifamily, which is, we wouldn't have the right to do, I think clearcutting the property is what you'd have to do in order to build it. Now, we haven't done a, we haven't done a tree survey. We haven't done a tight topographical survey. This is a, this is a schematic test-fit site plan based on an engineering threshold that uses a software program called LiDAR, and it's a, it's a program that estimates the topography of property. Engineers do it on virtually every project you start, particularly when it's heavily timbered like this, about where the ground surfaces are. If we determine what we can do by permission, then we'll put the really smart people together. They'll go out there, get an on-the-ground survey, everything tied into an exact elevation, and then they'll start working the technical design to do this. And this may end up only being a hundred lots. It may end up being a hundred and twenty lots. As you can see, there's a fair amount of irregular-shaped lots there. There's still a lot of math to be done about the technical side of the subdivision design, including traffic, utilities, detention, all of those things will, will get riddled out with the, with the technical design, that we just don't have those answers yet. And it's not prudent to go spend the money, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, to find an answer that the community may not support the use anyway. So that's why we're here before you tonight, saying, is this reasonable? We think it is. I think academically, from a planning perspective, I think it certainly meets that test of reasonableness. And the largest property owner with which we have a joint property line, we've come to terms with them. The first section, if you come off of Cotton Street, those first lots, it would be on your right. About, I think, the first five or six of those are up against multifamily. Those are multifamily duplexes behind us. And so that's consistent there. I believe there are, there are two homes, Mr. Kamak's being the large campus wooded fortress at the end of the street there, beautiful area. But, but yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're looking to get your support for.
Question to the applicant. Yes, sir.
Angela, the colored picture with the blue and pink or orange, whatever, where it's got multifamily two in pink in the inset? Keep going. Right there. Nope, the pink. That's, that's multifamily?
It's what's there now.
I'm sorry?
It was zone multifamily, but I believe that's a flagstick, and it's single-family but real dense, those townhomes.
Cul-de-sac.
Yeah. So that, the pink is single-family, but that green that's right there, those are duplexes.
Okay. And that's, they're gonna be next to the commercial development, I guess.
It's gonna be right next to this proposed duplex development.
Right. But they're, they're wanting to go to Two-Family?
To Two-Family.
So are you talking duplexes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And how many can you build?
Well, that test fit, I believe, Mr. Hale asked that of me earlier, and I couldn't recall, I was in the truck, but he counted them, and I think he said a hundred and ten, something like that. Yes, sir.
A hundred duplexes in one?
I think it's about a hundred and ten lots.
Which I think will happen soon, because we haven't looked at the kitchen and things like that that might be held on the property.
I think it would have been nice, I think, for everybody to kind of know what that BFE, that base fluid, would have been, so we could have had a good idea of what the elevation would be, so they'd have a better concept of what they'd be looking at as they came across, you know, that, that piece of property.
Sure.
I think that would have been nice. I'm, again, not against what you're trying to do. I'm all for providing more housing opportunities. I just think, you know, from a community standpoint, they would have liked to see that, or been more knowledgeable about how that was gonna.
And I appreciate that, and the reason we don't do that is because this type of zoning is governed by the UDC. And the UDC, you can do a lot of different things in it. And so I didn't want to create the impression that you were voting for a specific-looking building, because that would take a planned development zoning to do that.
Or just the concept. We would like to know if it's, if we're doing duplexes, are they walking through one door and we're going through several doors? Are they gonna be all front-facing doors? You know, what are we looking at? Are we looking at one build, you know? Just the concept. Are they attached? What, what it is we're getting, and that would kind of give them a little more information about the depth. I think that, that would be helpful, you know?
Thank you. We, we can definitely provide that. I mean, they're beautiful buildings with brick and rock and...
My question is about the public streets that are gonna be going through. Was there a reason, well, of course, you wanna make sure they're maintained, but the city, was there an option for them to be private streets? Or do they have to be, did it need to be a public street? Because I'm trying to make sure, are you gonna be able to reach these duplexes going through? Is there gonna be an entrance to the duplexes from that state, from the commercial property, or will they be blocked off?
From Cotton?
From Cotton.
Just, just east of that convenience store?
From, off of Cotton, those, that's the duplex lots that go, so it's gonna be going down a city street. And then if there's access guidelines, if the commercial market brings us all the way back to that street that's coming off Cotton, the city will tell us if we can have access off of that street for a particular development or not. That's, we don't get to choose that, because then that's governed by the city.
So the, so what was your, what'd you say was your reason for doing multifamily as opposed to single?
So...
I'm sure it's a fiscal reason, but...
First of all, we've done it before. We know how to do it, and we got all the economics, and it's not as risky for us. I think that it, it's a product that I think Longview could use. We don't do a formal sophisticated market study, but we're in, we do a lot of work in Texas, and we think that that, this type of product will be well-received here. We think it's academically appropriate, from a planning perspective, to go from commercial and the higher-intensity uses. You typically wouldn't bring those up against single-family in a, in a planning scenario. You would start with transitioning from industrial, then into retail, into certain lesser uses of retail, like office uses and so forth. And then there's a host of things that you could do after that, but it wouldn't start with putting a single-family residential subdivision like against, up against the back of the SEFCO. I think staff would typically say, if you ask them, that that's probably not what they would recommend, if their opinion was asked, but you would use a low-density. The, the reason why the city streets is a couple of things. One is, you bet, it's gonna, this is a, will generate a fair amount of avalorum tax, and there's a lot of residents that would live here, and they're gonna need city services and garbage trucks and those kinds of things. And so the, for Two-Family uses, I think this is the appropriate way to build it. If we were gonna do all that private, then I don't think that that would be able to be done in Two-Family. Even though it's the same buildings, if we were to build it as a campus of two, two-unit dwellings, that would probably require multifamily zoning and bring in a different test altogether. So...
How do we offset the parking? For, if we're doing one-car garage for each duplex, right? They're two-bedroom?
That's what the concept is built as, and it'll have, but the ones we built in Salado have two parking, so they've got three parking slips per side, so six per building. Only one of them is in a garage.
Okay. So they can park behind?
No, they park in the driveway.
They park, that's what I'm saying.
Like tandem.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, in tandem, yeah.
So we always, we always try to, you know, macro levels one way, but just so everyone knows, that, you know, one way or the other, one way or the other, this is gonna get developed.
Yes, sir.
It's either gonna be multifamily or single-family.
We own the property.
And the doors are gonna be not greatly different?
I don't think so. I mean, we could...
The number of cars coming in and out of there? Because, because honestly, I mean, and I know the lady, I forgot her name, mentioned earlier, and Mr. Kamak, you go up and down Eastman Road, I don't know if you could find a better place as far as low-impact. I mean, I know that the one gentleman talked about his neighborhood, but it's, isn't that the neighborhood that's pretty far east? Is that?
I'm sorry, which one? Longleaf?
Mr. Hale?
Yeah, so Mr. Hale's property is a little further to the east and to the south.
Okay, I know where Longleaf is, back behind the course. So, I mean, that, that's a pretty good distance. But I, my concern would be having, well, two things, and it's both DOT and, you know, coming off, I took my daughter to Hudson Pep for five years, and traffic is horrible right there. And then Country Club, I mean, Cotton, I'm sorry, is kind of the same way on the, on the east side of Cotton, or east of, east, of Eastman, rather, is just, it's crazy. So that would concern me if I lived in that area, because there's no way to go around either north or south of that. You'd be stuck on Cotton. So that part I could understand. As far as the, the buildings themselves and the residents, you're, you're not gonna find a place that's more desolate as far as not affecting people. I know there's a few people here, but, you know, the other one's pretty, that neighborhood's pretty far down there, but I, but that would be my concern, I guess, is the short of it, is the...
No matter what we do with the property, the traffic's gonna increase, and for me to tell you it's not, it's just nonsense. I think that once you get the permissions to say, okay, what, what will the community support? Then you start going into the technical math of going, here's the traffic. We'll have, I'm pretty sure we'll have to do a traffic impact analysis. I'm pretty sure we did one for the SEFCO when we did it, and some really smart people put a bunch of stuff in a computer, and it says, yeah, it should work, or no, it shouldn't. And if it doesn't work, what do you have to do? Do you have to add a turn lane? The turning movements for this are actually pretty good as far as entering the property and exiting it, but it's gonna increase more traffic at the intersection, yes, sir, as is anything in that quadrant that's going through there.
You said there'd be roughly the same amount of people, single-family versus...
That's my estimate. I haven't done the math, but I think it's gonna be pretty close. Because these lots are probably gonna average around between nine, eight, eighty-five hundred and ten thousand square feet, and if the other lots are seventy-five hundred square feet, and we get two residents on one versus the other, we're building two-bedroom, two-bath, and some of those others may be four-bedroom. So I don't, I don't know. As far as people, yes. Cars, I'm not sure. But it's gonna be really, I think it's gonna be within a margin of error, honestly. I don't, I don't know that. That's my opinion, and I'm sure other folks have...
What has your company developed besides, I think you said Salado?
Salado?
Salado.
So currently, we have projects under construction in, and guys gonna, I'm trying to count, San Antonio. We're a preferred developer for Starbucks. We build about ten or twelve units for them across the state, including the one in Gilmer. That's our closest one to here. But right now, we have projects under construction in Decatur, Sulphur Springs, Maybank, Marshall. We're about to, to kick another one off up here in East Texas that we're, we're going through the permit process for. We just opened up the one in Snyder, Abilene, Waco, Hewitt, Colleen. That's the ones I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay, so, so you've done several, several different prospects?
We opened up about twenty, twenty new projects.
Are all of them single-story? Have you ever done the two-stories, or?
Not on, not on residential.
Everything's single?
Yes, sir. Everything's single-story.
Any other questions?
Is it mostly single-family, or are the other developments also multifamily?
We don't do any single-family work. We're not home builders whatsoever. We're commercial developers. And we put this kind of project as a commercial development in our brains, because we'll come in and likely build a subdivision at once and build, and kind of roll the dice, build them all.
So you build it out, hold it for a certain period, since it's an opportunity zone, and then sell it to somebody else?
I had no idea it was an opportunity zone, so I didn't know that.
You know, here's my concern. I mean, y'all were willing to invest in the property, currently zoned, single-family four.
Yes, sir.
To the north, it's single-family four and, and office. To the south, it's single-family. To the west, it's single-family. And to the east, it's a single-family and, you know, I guess the golf course, I mean, I'm a lot less concerned about one whole of the golf course than I am the other three sides of the property that have single-family, so. At least according to the application.
I may not have followed all the, the dots, but it's all commercial on the other side of Eastman Road.
To the west.
To the west, yes, sir, and to our north.
Okay, well, this shows, on, on the application shows, single-family.
Okay. The area in blue is the single-family portion, and the SEFCO, which we, which was our inaugural project on this tract, was single-family when we brought that up a few years ago. So we do think it's consistent with Eastman Road and uses that you would use to transition to single-family. Now, and of course, the golf course occupies a good chunk of what, of that SF four, those two big, large tracks there, that's all golf course, which is also zoned, single-family. So single-family's kind of a, seems to be maybe a, kind of a default-type zoning, because the golf course has been here over a hundred years, and I'm sure they didn't apply for single-family when they built the golf course. So it kind of got overlaid on top of them. But, but yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I think it fits, but just my opinion.
Okay, before I start the public hearing, any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Subject to recall. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition to the request? Please state your name, address, and speak into the microphone.
Cliff Hale, two-twenty-three Longleaf. And Angela, oh, you've got the map up. I don't know how many of y'all are familiar with Longleaf Drive. That was in the South Longview Improvement Program, the slip. And I think Angela and Michael can probably attest that that's the most significant residential development that's gone in the slip since the program was developed. And we were denied any slip or any funds for development, because obviously, Longview didn't want that type of development in South Longview, meaning a professional development for, for professional employees. We've got two doctors in the neighborhood. We've got, we have bankers. We have the head of Westlake Chemical Engineering out there. So it's a professional neighborhood diverse, and it's the most significant residential development that went into the, into the slip. As pertaining to the Pinecrest endorsement, I have to admit, I'm shocked. I am a member of Pinecrest. The board, the membership was not notified of this project. I've talked to one board member. I don't think the board ever voted on this particular project, and so I'm not sure where the approval derived from, so that's another issue for us. Again, I've got the petition. I'll submit another copy that will go with this case. I am concerned with the traffic count, first and foremost. Two-fifty-nine is a major US thoroughfare. It's considered US two-fifty-nine for a reason. It's a United States highway, and there are high rates of speed travel on that highway. And I guess my question is, is ultimately, when there's gonna be a lot required, who's gonna pay for that? Is a developer gonna pay for it, or the taxpayers?
That'd be part of the traffic impact analysis. So if a signal...
That'd be part of the traffic impact analysis. So if a signal was warranted through that TIA, then the developer would be required to install that as, as part of the development process.
Okay. So, uh, in conjunction, uh, with the development of Longleaf, you know, and, and some of our fellow neighbors have spoken, this is the single largest investment we have. And we're trying to protect that investment. Now, we all know what goes on just north of this project on, on two fifty-nine and eighty. And y'all know what I'm talking about there. The city has ignored it for years and years and years. And I don't want that type of traffic filtering down into that neighborhood and bordering what should be a historical national landmark in that golf course, which is over a hundred years old. I don't, and, you know, he, he said, well, it might be a hundred and ten u- units and it might, we might end up having just as many single family. But, you know, he's gotta look at the, the land program. Hey, the land issues and the pipeline issues and the number of lots you can get, it's gonna be, the same problems are gonna be whether it's SF four or multi-tenant. You're only gonna be able to get so many in there. So, you know, he mentioned maybe a hundred and fifty, single family. By my math, two, a hundred and ten duplexes, that's two hundred and twenty units. A hundred, a hundred and fifty, single family, that's less than. Now, I might have graduated from Henderson High School, but I do get that math. It's less than. So, you know, again, I'm asking y'all, this is just one line item in a large portfolio that they're gonna jettison off and they're not gonna care in ten years when they get the, they reap the opportunities on money. They're not gonna care what they leave here in Longview. They're gonna be gone and we're still gonna be living here, living with this. So I'm asking y'all to support your citizens, your friends, your family that live here with you as opposed to somebody from Temple, Texas. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition, please come to the mic?
Of course. Um, Brenda Voth here. I live on, uh, Country Club Drive. I think the best use of this land is use it for which it was planned, single family residential. That's a whole bunch of people packed in a very small area that's zoned, single family residential. I don't wanna reiterate everything I've already said, but.
Can you put the microphone a little bit closer to you, please? Having a little difficulty.
Is that better? I'll stand on my tiptoes.
We got an old guy up here.
Y'all couldn't hear either.
Um, and my, my property taxes, the traffic, and who's gonna end, ultimately end up for the, or be responsible for the increased police presence with all of these hundreds of people that are gonna live in this community? I really hope you guys reconsider the vote on this. I, I, I just bought my house and I am not for this at all. Not at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak against this proposal? Any of the commissioners have any questions or comments?
I just have one more comment. A lot of times when, um, smaller square footage or a multi-family, um, comes up in the community, a lot of people think of Section Eight. And if you're, um, note tech, note takers, if you go to longviewtexas.gov, all that Section Eight housing information is public. Uh, most of the time when we think of Section Eight housing, we think of, uh, dilapidated properties. That's actually, those are not on Section Eight housing. Section Eight housing is FHA VA, uh, standards. And so they have an initial inspection. And then they have a bi-annual inspection to make sure there's no plumbing issues, no electrical issues. Nothing can be wrong with those properties, period. We, we probably live in, uh, properties that are in more disrepair than what Section Eight requires. There are over nine hundred applicants waiting on Section Eight housing just in the city. So I just wanted to clarify, for more information, if you go to longviewtexas.gov and go to the Housing Authority site, you can look at all that information for Section Eight. So that's not something to be afraid of. In my opinion, that's something that would actually improve areas because they force you, they force the owner to make sure that that house, that property is, has no issues with it whatsoever. So the dilapidated housing that you do see in this city is normally not on Section Eight housing at all.
Any additional comments or questions? If not, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
With or without the stipulations?
With the stipulations provided in the staff report.
Thank you.
Have a motion to approve with the stipulations as provided by the city.
I see.
And we have a second. Okay, let's, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Got it? All opposed? So with a tie vote, do you send it to the city?
Yeah, it's still go to the city.
It goes anywhere.
Either way, it goes either way, tie vote, yes.
Alright, so we have a four-four vote. I thought we had nine commissioners.
We do. One's absent.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Regler Agenda Item E. Angela?
Yes, sir. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z twenty-three dash fifteen filed by Forecast Ventures LLC and Billy Sally requesting a rezone from multi-family two to single-family two zoning district for approximately point one seven three acres of abstract two fifty-eight PP Rain Survey Track Nine, Section Seven, located north of Fairway Oaks Lane, south of Masters Way. Um, so the applicant is requesting to rezone a portion of property from multi-family two to single-family two. Uh, the applicant actually owns a piece of property at twenty-eight oh four Fairway Oaks Lane. Uh, he has purchased a portion of the property behind them, which is to the north, that is in the pink. Um, and is in the process of plating the property to incorporate that piece um, into the per, property that he currently owns and creating two lots. Um, staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Any questions of the staff at this point? Is the applicant present? If so, please come to the mic. State your name, address.
Billy Sally, twenty-eight oh four Fairway Oaks Lane, the other golf course in town. Yeah, any questions?
Any questions?
What is the property currently being used as just vacant?
A moment. It's backed up to a driving range, you can see.
There we go. Okay, there we go.
There's a driving range behind the property, so it's a non-buildable at this point in time. And, uh, the property had irregular shaped lines. I know y'all, you had others, you can see all the different lines in there. I've bought several pieces of this back and forth from the golf course. And, uh, need this last little piece to make the extra lot, so it would be two lots.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in support of the request? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition to the request? I see none. Any additional questions or comments, commissioners? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Same as motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Does carry a body and unanimous vote. Angela, staff report.
Uh, yes, sir. The one zoning item that went to city council was approved.
The, the one that we met five minutes on?
Yes, our five minute, record five minute meeting, um, was very short and council did approve that zoning change.
Okay. Any comments of Angela or anything before I adjourn the meeting? Then this concludes today's meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance. Thank you, commissioners.